Good evening and welcome to the Oceanside Planning Commission meeting for July 26. I'm going to read our advisory comments first before we do the roll call. So this meeting will be conducted in accordance with Governor Newsom's Executive Order 2920 relating to COVID-19 virus. That order suspends several provisions of the Brown Act related to telephonic participation by Planning Commission staff members and the public. Due to applicable public health orders, the city council chambers are open to the public with masks required for unvaccinated individuals in all indoor areas of City Hall. Members of the public are encouraged to listen or watch the meeting via Zoom, by computer or by phone. The meeting can also be watched on K O C T, K O C T Cox Channel 19, AT&amp;T Channel 99, or on livestream on K O C T's website, although there is a slight time delay. If you would like to comment on an item in person during the Planning Commission meeting, you may do so by filling out a speaker slip in the chambers or submitting the form to city staff. And the agenda page has all the information on how to participate via Zoom. With that out of the way, I will ask Vice Chair Morrisey to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If everybody could rise.
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tom. City Planner, if you could do the roll call.
Good evening. Chair Rosales.
Present.
Vice Chair Morrisey.
Here.
Commissioner Balma.
Present.
Commissioner Hayes. Commissioner Custer.
Here.
Here.
And I believe we have Commissioner Goodkind via Zoom.
Present.
And likewise, we have Commissioner Rains via Zoom.
Also present.
So you have all seven commissioners tonight and a quorum.
Great, thank you. Moving to communication matters not on the agenda, City Planner, do we have any slips?
Yes, we have one speaker.
Is that speaker present or are they via Zoom?
That speaker is Mercy Walton. Yeah, feel free to come to the podium.
Yeah, come on forward, give us your name for the record, and you will have three minutes. Again, this is an item not on tonight's agenda.
Do you mind if I could?
You can take your mask off, yes.
So Mercy Walton is my name.
Great.
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight, it was completely last minute. So my name is Mercy Walton, and I'm a longtime resident born and raised in the city of Oceanside. I'm aware that the city code for Oceanside currently does not allow hookah lounges. I would like to have this restriction amended and brought to City Council for approval as I'm planning to open a hookah lounge in the downtown area of Oceanside. I also understand that some of our local committees have concerns around the attraction to our youth. I too have the same concern, which is why I plan to make my establishment 21 and up with the proper security precautions in place to prevent underage engagement. I am looking to open a safe and fun business to be a part of the improving landscape of downtown Oceanside and provide an additional form of entertainment to assist in the added prosperity for our growing community. Allowing me to establish a hookah business in the city of Oceanside would bring much-needed tax revenue to our hometown. The use of hookah is widespread all over the world and has grown in popularity. Being the only hookah establishment in the 20-mile radius will present great benefits to our city, as well as bringing more visibility in the surrounding cities. As I've grown up in Oceanside, I've watched it evolve and change into what we call home. With your support, this will allow for our minority-owned business to thrive and create much-needed diversity in our beautiful city of Oceanside. I appreciate your consideration to this matter, and I hope that my request is taken seriously because I want to start the business that I believe will enhance our community. Thank you very much for listening to me.
And thank you for your comments, appreciate it.
Thank you.
That's the only slip for tonight? Thank you.
Chairman, that's the only speaker on non-agenda items.
Great, thanks. Okay, moving then to approval of minutes from our last meeting on July 12. Commissioners, it was in your packet. I'll go around, any comments before I go around asking for a motion and approval? Commissioner Goodkind or Rains? Any edits, any changes? No? Somebody like to make a motion and then we'll go around?
Make a motion that we approved last week's or last meeting?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Commissioner Custer, I'll start with you, yea or nay?
Yea.
Commissioner?
Yea.
Yea. Sometimes I space. Vice Chair Morrisey?
Yea.
Commissioner Obama?
Yea.
Commissioner Goodkind?
Yes.
Commissioner Rains?
Yea.
And I too am a yea, so the minutes are approved. No changes. Consent calendar is next item on the agenda, don't see anything listed there. And then the next item is transportation items, also no items before us tonight. So we'll go to the public hearings. There are two items tonight. The first one is consideration of two conditional use permits and a waiver of locational requirements to operate a medical cannabis manufacturing and distribution facility within an existing building located at 2420 Industry Street. The applicant is J&amp;K Manufacturing. Open with disclosures, I read staff report and drove by the location. I don't recall getting, oh, I think we had one email. Those are my disclosures. Commissioner Custer?
Read the staff report, drove by the location and read the email.
Obama?
I also did the same.
Vice Chair Morrisey?
I read the staff report.
Commissioner Goodkind?
I read the staff report, I read the email from the public, and I visited the site.
Commissioner Rains?
I have the same disclosures, Mr. Chairman, except I'm just familiar with the area, didn't drive by it.
Great, and Commissioner Hayes?
Read the staff report, drove by and just saw the email.
Great, thank you. We have staff presentation, Stephanie Servantes doing that tonight. Go ahead, Stephanie.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Stephanie Servantes with the Planning Division, and I will be presenting conditional use permit 20-00013 and 20-0004 and a waiver of locational requirements for J&amp;K Manufacturing, a cannabis distribution and manufacturing facility at 2420 Industry. The site is on Industry Street near Camelot Drive and Oceanside Boulevard. The project site has a general plan designation of light industrial and is sown limited industrial. The site is surrounded by industrial uses to the east, south, and west, and residential to the north. Here you can see the project site with the industrial park to the east, south, and west, and the residential uses to the north. The project proposes a cannabis manufacturing and distribution facility. The project consists of interior tenant improvements only. The applicant proposes to divide an existing tenant space in the multi-tenant building. The facility is also required to obtain a waiver of locational requirements. The applicant received approval of a local license modification to operate under the new adult use regulations that were recently approved by City Council and plans to submit a substantial conformity application after City Council approval. Here is a site plan of the site, you can see the three separate existing tenant spaces, and the facility proposes to occupy the west tenant space and divide that further. Here is the proposed floor plan. The project proposal is consistent with the general plan in that there are no emissions, and the project has been conditioned to eliminate any potential impacts to the surrounding area. The site is not open to the public, so there is no increase in loitering or foot traffic, and the business promotes exportation of good. The project proposes a manufacturing and distribution facility within an industrial area and is not detrimental to the public health or safety. This site is within 1,000 feet of two separate residential districts, two religious facilities, a liquor store, which is a regulated use, and a childcare facility. However, the nearest residential use is over 2,000 feet away via pedestrian path. The north residential district, both religious facilities, the liquor store, and the childcare facility are all on the north side of Oceanside Boulevard, which provides a physical barrier to the industrial district below due to the elevation difference. The residential district to the south is across the sprinter tracks and is either a mile walk away via Crouch Street or 3.5 miles walk via El Camino Real. The facility is required to obtain a state license from the newly-formed Department of Cannabis Control, which is the new state department, and must participate in the state's track and trace system. The applicant was originally granted a local license in May of 2020, and the license must be renewed annually. The facility is subject to onsite inspections and audits on an annual basis. The applicant was required to conduct enhanced notification of the project. The applicant sent out notification letters in November of 2020 and received three responses. Staff received one comment and opposition, which was emailed to the commissioners' staff. At this time, staff recommends that the Planning Commission confirm issuance of SEQA exemption and recommend approval of conditional use permit 20-00013 and 20-00014 and waiver of locational requirement. I am available for questions. The applicant is also present and available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. I just had one question. I know there won't be a signage, so it won't be obvious as to what this facility is, but is there a security plan that goes along with their operation?
There is a security plan that is required per the city code, which was reviewed by the city's consultant and city staff as part of the local license issuance.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Goodkind or Rains? I can't see you.
Yes, I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
The current upstairs space that looks like apartments, I was trying to figure out in the plans what that will be used for. That's my question.
I will have the applicant response to that.
Commissioner Rains? Hang on, sir, we're going to get through questions first and then we'll have you come up. Commissioner Rains, any questions?
I don't have any questions, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I don't see, sorry to have you sit down, come right on up. If you could introduce yourself, this is your time to make a presentation. You heard the one question, but if you wanted to start first with a presentation about the project or anything else, this is your time.
Charlie, thank you. Is the microphone on, can you hear me?
I think we can hear you, yeah.
Okay, regarding, first of all, my name is James Bollett, and I am applying for the conditional use permit for J&amp;K Manufacturing. The question was, what is the structure on the roof of the building? And that structure is offices for our neighbor Reagan Roofing. There are three businesses in that building. There's us in Suite A, Reagan Roofing in Suite B, which also includes the after-purpose-built offices on the second floor, and then there's a mechanics shop in Suite C. So those are the three businesses within that building. We believe that we've met all the requirements for the CUP. We've looked at all of the different components of the manufacturing and distribution license, both on a state and local level, and I believe that we'll be able to add something positive for the city, and we're ready to move forward.
Very good, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Commissioners, Commissioner Goodkind, did that answer your question or do you have a follow-up?
Yes, and the follow-up, I guess, would be, is there any feedback or input or opinions from those neighbors in that building?
Yes, they had talked to me because they received notices of this meeting also, and they were, Reagan Roofing was willing to come over, but they weren't available tonight. They said they would come out to the city council meeting when that occurs. There's also, this is a little plug for our little shop next door called the Come On Over Cafe. We use them, they have great coffee, but they're also very interested in having some good neighbors next to them, so please use them, they're good, and feel free to stop by and see us next door.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rains, any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay. This is a public hearing, so we invite the public for their input. Do we have any slips from anybody online and then anybody in the public?
Mr. Chairman, we have no requested speakers on this item.
Okay, thank you. Then we will close the public hearing, and we will bring it back for discussion. Commissioners, anybody? Any questions, any comments? I see shaking of heads, no? Anybody would like then to jump right to a motion?
Well, I would just like to say, Mr. Chair, that, I mean, to me, this looks like the ideal location for this kind of facility. It's like smack in the middle of an industrial zone, and the residential areas are blocked by Oceanside Boulevard and train tracks, so I'll make a motion.
Go right ahead.
I will move that we confirm issuance of a Class 1 categorical exemption per SEQA, Article 19, Section 15301, existing facilities, and adopt Planning Commission Number 2021P27, recommending City Council approval of conditional use permits cited and a waiver of locational requirements for a proposed medical cannabis manufacturing and distribution facility at 2420 Industry Street.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Commissioner Goodkind, anybody?
I have, and I'll second that.
And we have a second, Commissioner Balma. Any last-minute discussion on this item? Seeing none, we'll go around and ask for a vote. Commissioner Custer?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayes?
Yes.
Vice Chair Morrisey?
Yes.
Commissioner Obama?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodkind?
Yes.
Commissioner Rains?
Yes.
And I too am in support of the motion.
Mr. Chairman, we'll record that as seven in favor, zero against, motion passes.
Great, thank you. Which takes us to item number five. Consideration of a Zone Amendment, amending Article 36 of the Oceanside Zoning Ordinance and Chapter 33 of the Oceanside City Code and Local COSO Program Amendment cited in the agenda item, establishing the amended text as part of the implementing document of the local COSO program. The name of this project is Tattoo Establishment Zone Amendment, and the applicant is the city of Oceanside. We'll start with public hearings. I reviewed staff report, and I know we got a letter from Coastal Law Group, I believe it was, and did everybody get a copy of that? I have a copy here if you want to read it, and we'll circulate it. It came as an email. Came as an email earlier today. Here's another copy. Those are my disclosures. Commissioner Custer?
Read the report and the letter.
Commissioner Hayes?
Same.
Vice Chair Morrisey?
Read the report only.
Okay, go ahead and read the letter then. Commissioner Obama?
I just had the staff report, I didn't read the letter.
Okay. Commissioner Goodkind?
I read the staff report, I read the letter from the Coast Law Group, and I drove by the site mentioned in the Coast Law Group on Mission Avenue, Freddie V's Tattoo Parlor.
Thank you. And Commissioner Rains?
Same disclosures, I read the letter from the Coast Law Group, I read staff report, and I am familiar with both of the locations mentioned in the letter.
Great, thank you. Stephanie, you're back. Stephanie, it looks like you both presentations tonight, so go ahead and roll through it. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening again. My name is Stephanie Servantes with the Planning Division, and I will be presenting the Tattoo Establishment Zone and City Code Amendment. Tattoo establishments are currently allowed in community general and limited commercial sites, the Coastal General Commercial District, Downtown Subdistrict 1 and 2, and Limited and General Industrial District. There is also a city council-approved zone amendment that allows tattoo establishments in additional downtown subdistricts. That zone amendment has yet to be certified by a California coastal commission. There are currently four active facilities at 408 and 604 Mission, at 423 South Coast Highway, and at 1950 Oceanside Boulevard. And there are two other additional project sites at 1413 North Coast Highway and at 3753 Mission Avenue. The proposed tax amendment to Article 36 would waive the 500-foot separation requirement from a residential district if an intervening freeway or state route is located between the proposed location and the residential district. The modification also includes removing Section 3601.1 and 3601.2 and adding them in an appendix to Article 36. The modification also includes removing Chapter 33, Tattoo Establishments, from the city code, and the modification requires a local coastal plan amendment due to Article 36 being applicable citywide. Since the publication of the staff report, staff has received further direction from City Attorney's Office and has modified the proposed tax amendment to Section 3604C to read, "The regulated use enumerated as T tattoo establishments in Section 3602 above shall not be located closer than 500 feet to any other tattooing establishment or be located within 500 feet of any residential district or any sensitive land uses enumerated in Sections 3604B, 1, 2, or 4. However, a regulated use enumerated as T tattooing establishment in Section 3602 above may be located closer than 500 feet to a residential district, provided there is an intervening freeway Interstate 5 or State Highway, State Route 76 and State Route 78. No other location requirements shall apply to tattooing establishments." So this is a change to the proposed tax per direction of City Attorney's Office. This is different than what was in your packet. No other changes to buffers are proposed, no changes to zoning districts are proposed. The city's commercial and industrial districts run along the city's main corridors, which abut residential districts and limit opportunities for businesses to adhere to the buffer regulations. The city's existing freeway and state routes offer limited opportunities for pedestrian traffic to cross. Chapter 36 of the city code is currently not being administered, and staff believes that the administrative regulated use permit process is adequate to review and condition these facilities. The proposed tax amendment would affect five areas in the city. Area 1 is near the harbor on North Coast Highway and Interstate 5. The area is sown to Subdistrict 6A, 6B, and 6C. The tattoo establishment used in this district is pending coastal certification of the zone amendment. The current uses include typical commercial uses, including retail, eating establishments, also includes residential and hotel motel uses. Area 2 is near Interstate 5 and Oceanside Boulevard. The site is sown community commercial and is currently used as the sprinter track. Area 3 is near State Route 78 and College Boulevard. The site is sown community commercial and is currently developed as an auto dealership. Area 4 is near State Route 76 and Mission Avenue. The site is sown community commercial and is currently vacant. And Area 5 is near State Route 76, Mission Avenue, and El Camino Real. The site is sown general commercial and is currently a shopping center. At this time, staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the city code and zoning ordinance amendment and local coastal plan amendment. I am available for questions, thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. I had one question, and I think maybe the staff report addresses it. So is this a cleanup item to rectify a situation, or, as it reads in the staff report, this was essentially initiated by an applicant looking to open up an establishment?
Chair Rosales, Commissioners, the application came in as an application from the public in order to open up the location at 1413 North Coast Highway. As is in the staff report, staff recently approved a business license that would also benefit from the language proposed, so we are bringing this zone amendment forward.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for staff?
I have a question. So Zone 4, is that the bacon lot there at Fusat and, or is it Fusat or, oh, it's gone. Is it Fusat or Crouch?
It's near Fusat, it's the old drive-in site.
Oh, yeah, okay. I was thinking, I just wanted to clarify that. I was thinking of something else. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Goodkind or Rains?
I don't have any questions at this time, but I might later.
At this time, I have no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just elaborate a little bit on Stephanie's comment. The original zoning amendments were initiated by the public staff's analysis and city staff analysis, is that our existing zoning regulations are very limiting, and tattoo establishments are protected as a First Amendment free speech item, and so these amendments would provide for more sites within our city. Just as a little reminder, First Amendment rights, we have to allow them in the city somewhere. A classic example is an adult business. A lot of cities would love to not have any zoning allowed for those type of uses, but we have to allow them somewhere. So again, staff's analysis is this would loosen the regulations a little bit to allow more sites to be eligible.
Great, thank you. The applicant is actually the city, but I see quite a few audience members, so we're not going to have a presentation by an applicant, per se, we had Stephanie's presentation. So we'll go to the public then and get input. I suspect we have a few slips, okay? You want to start calling those off?
Yes, Commissioner Rosales, we have two speakers, in-person speakers. First speaker will be Marco Gonzalez, and the on-deck speaker will be Jaclyn Von Muzer.
Chair Rosales, members of the Planning Commission, Marco Gonzalez. I hope you've had a chance to take a look at my letter, and it's actually appropriate that we're discussing this immediately after your discussion and approval of the cannabis item that came right before. First of all, staff has completely and totally undersold how bad they screwed up and how that led to us being here today. The fact that the staff report didn't include a copy of the abatement agreement with the use on Mission Avenue reflecting just how bad the city screwed up in this circumstance. They issued a business license to an entity to use a CUP that hasn't existed for more than six years, under a regulatory scheme that hasn't existed in this city for years. under a regulatory scheme that hasn't existed in this city for years. The fact that no one in the city said, oh, it would be really odd for us to simply issue a business license to this highly regulated use when we know that every other entity that tries to do this use in the city goes through tons of hoops, tons of hurdles, spends thousands of dollars to be able to open. There were places that this use could have been in the city. They just chose a place that I believe the city told them used, inappropriately, used to have this CUP. Under your own rules, if a CUP isn't used for 180 days, it is no longer valid, notwithstanding the fact that it was expressly rescinded alongside the approval of another tattoo shop. So the city screws up, and instead of the city attorney going to them and saying, sorry, you gotta leave. You gotta go to someplace where you can be permitted. We might owe you a little bit of money in damages for your lease. They instead initiate this free-of-charge zoning amendment. Here we go, a little gift wrapped in a nice bow. Go ahead, have your tattoo establishment, where frankly, you asked another tattoo establishment to relinquish its business in exchange for a tattoo shop that they got here downtown. You took a $350,000 business away from one entity, held it in abatement, and then gave it to someone else for nothing. That's wrong. But let's say, okay, First Amendment, we have to approve by right tattoo establishments because they are First Amendment uses. So let's do away with our locational requirements if there's an intervening freeway. Okay, but let's meet the letter or the spirit of the law, and that is to create a barrier. Just like the railroad tracks were cited as a barrier on the cannabis establishment, if there was a railroad crossing where pedestrians could very easily walk across, you would not be saying, okay, that acts as a buffer. I provided you photographs of both of the locations that are currently before the city, on Mission Avenue and North Coast Highway. Both have unobstructed pedestrian walkways directly accessing residential areas well under 500 feet. It makes no sense logically, factually, legally to say that these freeways create an actual buffer or barrier. You cannot, on the one hand, have the findings required in Exhibit B to the staff report for tattoo shops and cite the potential detriments of not having that 500-foot requirement, and then turn around and say that the complete absence of a pedestrian physical barrier can't be taken into account. So I'd ask you to do as I recommended in my letter, and that is add an additional finding if you're going to approve.
Thank you. Next slip.
Next speaker, Jacqueline.
Good evening. My name is Jackie Von Muser, and I'm the owner of Freddie V's American Tattoo, along with my husband Freddie. We're located at 3753 Mission Avenue. We also have a location in San Clemente, and we've been in business for 11 years together. I'm actually a professional Reiki master, holistic healer, so tattooing's not my forte. I handle all the admin. My husband's the artist, and he has been for 35 years, one with the mustache. He's a fun-loving, honest, genuine, and laid-back kind of man. So this zone amendment, Article 36, is imperative that it pass for us. Our business that just opened June the 3rd is flowing and is now being threatened of having to be shut down unless this amendment passes, which is very alarming, considering it had been approved by the city by mistake. I want to clarify, I didn't ask for a conditional use permit. I did not ask for a conditional use permit. I was given that permit when I called to say I would like to check on zoning requirements for this property. I was then given the go-ahead, okay? I then signed a five-year lease agreement to my 70-year-old, sweet-old veteran landlord, okay? So, that said, first off, I want to say, I never thought I'd be in this position. This error and this stress is very untimely, considering, first off, I just got back from the hospital at 5:15. I had to delay a surgery for breast tumors in order to be here tonight. So this stress is very untimely, and my husband doesn't need the stress, and I do not. So, moving on. Our tattoo shop is a family-owned business. We employ veterans. All we want to do is own and operate a successful business and give back to our community and our military. We stand before you to defend our business, our location, and our livelihood due to an error that the city made upon approving our license. We were given approval to open. Now we're in a predicament about to lose our entire shop and my entire savings that I invested in on this second location. We followed the rules in seeking a license. We had no idea there were any issues until after we moved in and got notified. So we thought our hard work was complete. We thought we could sit back and enjoy life. We operate a clean, sober establishment. 80% of our clientele are military. We support local charities, Words of Comfort, Hope Promise, NAMI, National Alliance for Mental Illness, Sheckler Foundation. Our goal is to add value to the community, which is now our hometown. We came from San Clemente, but it is my hometown. So our goal is to seek resolution without any change to my current location and to establish a respectable rapport with my fellow businesses. We have an excellent rapport with our San Clemente competitors. No issues. We're all great friends. So it saddens me to see that this is going on. In conclusion, I think I might have left something out. Our honest, our tattoo artists are honest. We consider them family, and they rely upon the business for their family, as well as myself and husband. This is my retirement. Three of these artists that are combat veterans are now suffering with PTSD due to all this stress. So everybody has different talents and a God-given American right to make a living while enjoying every moment of it. In conclusion, I hope the city resolves the matter quickly and fairly, but most importantly, making sure that this error is never made again to an honest family trying to build a business and an honest living in your community. Thank you so much for your time, and thank you to Mr. Jeff Hunt. I appreciate all your efforts in assisting us with this.
Next speaker.
Commissioner Rosales, Chairman, that's the last speaker.
Not on Zoom?
Don't have any speakers on Zoom, no.
Okay, great, thank you. Then we will close the public hearing, and we'll bring it back for discussion by commissioners. Commissioner Hayes?
Just one brief question. Have there been a history of impacts on the communities from tattoo parlors that we've had? Either from criminal activity or any kind of safety concerns, especially in the last 10 years?
Chairman and commissioners, in talking to the police, they indicated that tattoo establishments are not a cause of concern. They're not getting a lot of calls regarding tattoo establishments. But in the past, there have been some applications that did cause concern. In talking to our city attorney's office, and Barbara can correct me if I'm wrong, the motivation on the city staff side, again, as I mentioned earlier, is to allow more sites, just a few. As Stephanie indicated, this amendment would only result in five sites. One's a Sprinter station, literally a line. I suppose if they pulled up the track and sold the property, it potentially could be. Another one is a corner of Mossy Nissan, very unlikely, but potentially. A third one is the drive-in site, which is a subject of a very extensive project right now. Possible they could do a tattoo establishment there. But really, those three are somewhat unlikely. The two that remain are the two applicants that have been cited. So again, the motivation on city staff, and there is this one situation that you just heard a lot of testimony about of the site on Mission, but don't lose track of the other site on North Coast Highway, where the applicant has requested a zone amendment to allow his site as well. So that's the focus, is more sites, but just a few.
Thank you. And maybe I'll ask the next question, city planner or city attorney. So reference is made to if we sought to approve this tonight, we'd have to find an additional or make an additional finding. So is, can you speak to that, or are we good as is?
Well, Barbara can correct me if I'm wrong, but Stephanie and I have been working closely with John Mullin, the city's attorney. It's not like planning staff just crafted this language on our own.
Thank you. Commissioner Goodkind or Rains, any comments or thoughts?
I, I'm curious about this error, and I mean, there's allegations that a huge error was made. Can staff elaborate on that or respond to that?
Commissioner and commissioner, what happened is there was a previous law that required a limit on the number of tattoo establishments in the city. There was a tattoo establishment approved in 3753, I think is the address. And then they wanted a second site, and the city council made a deal, so to speak, and said, if you rescind your conditional use permit on the 3753 site, we'll approve a different site for you. So there's no net gain in the number of tattoo establishments. Staff did make an error, and we did not record in our permit tracking system the fact that that CUP was rescinded. Our CUPs run with the land. There is no six-month expiration date, as was alleged at the podium. That's inaccurate information on a CUP. So when the planner got a request to, for a business license at 3753 Mission, they looked at the record and saw that there was a CUP for a tattoo establishment approved on that site. And since CUPs run with the land and don't expire, the business license was signed off. And that was, there was two errors there that city staff made, admittedly.
I'm sorry, what was the timing of that agreement with the city council to move that one business from there to another location? How long ago was that?
I'm going off memory, but several years. I'm going off memory, but several years ago. Also, I should have mentioned that subsequent to that CUP getting rescinded and changing locations, the city attorney revised our tattoo establishment regulations based on free speech issues, so that it no longer requires a full CUP in front of a public hearing. It's done administratively by staff now.
So back to your comment, the initial location had a CUP. It was rescinded and then reestablished at the new location. But then the CUP that runs with the land at 3753 actually stayed there? I'm trying to follow that.
The resolution by the city council rescinded that CUP.
Okay.
If the zoning amendment is not approved, then the operators at 3753 cannot get an administrative regulated use permit under the new provisions now. So they're dependent upon this zoning amendment, along with the establishment at 1413, I think, Coast Highway, somewhere in that block. Both the businesses are dependent on the zoning amendment.
Very good, thank you. Commissioner, Vice Chairman Morrissey?
So from what I'm hearing, I'm not compelled to want to change zoning, but I do feel like the city made a mistake. So how do we redress that and make it equitable so that somebody doesn't lose their investment? Is that, can we address that?
Yeah, I was going to ask a similar question. Commissioner Morrissey, is there a way to grant a waiver to this particular business without doing a zoning amendment? Staff?
Mr. Chairman and commissioners, the, there's no zoning provision that would allow the business to continue unless there's a zoning amendment, and the proposed amendment is passed. If that is not passed, there's no zoning process that would allow the 3753 or the 1413 North Coast Highway. There are, the applicant could pursue legal remedies against the city, but that's not zoning.
Well, the city brought forth this zoning amendment for multiple locations, correct?
Correct. Again, it's, there's two that are dependent on it, not just the 3753, but also North Coast Highway. And there are three other potential sites, though those are remote.
They're at 3753 right now, right?
There is a business there now, correct, a tattoo business?
Can't the city bring an amendment that says that's fine? And not approve the other potential sites?
The original, the way this process unfolded was the original request was by 1413 North Coast Highway to ask for a zoning amendment, because their site is not allowed based on the proximity to a residential zone.
But 1413 North Coast Highway is not an entity that's in business today, correct?
Well, they have a business there, but they don't have a tattoo establishment. They have an application in for a tattoo establishment.
Well, so if we, if we just, if the city brought something forth that we allow where they are, where the issue is now, where we made the mistake, can we, can we allow that to happen and not 1430 North Coast Highway? Is that the same owner?
No, no, they're different owners.
All right, yeah, I understand. I think I understand it now. And I would say, what I would be amenable to is just, we made the mistake, so let's, you know, let's let them operate, but not, I would be, I don't want to change zoning because, to cover up a mistake. So that's all I said.
Well, again, there was one business that is subject to a city mistake. There's a second business that requested the zoning amendment, and they actually requested it prior to this issue with the mistakes at 3753. And it's...
So it's both at 1430 and where we are now, we're Mission?
3753, yeah.
Yeah, so I guess maybe if that's the case...
But I think I heard the city planner say that these types of establishments have to have the appropriate layer of zoning underneath them to make all this work, so we don't have the flexibility of just having a waiver for their businesses. It's got to actually have the layer of planning underneath it.
Tattoo businesses are protected as free speech, so that zoning process that I mentioned earlier, that our city attorney crafted, is based on nondiscretionary criteria. It's just ministerial. It's black or white. Do you meet these criteria or not? So it's different than the regulated use process that you just witnessed on the cannabis, where there is discretion.
Different sites be separated and handled individually?
The, the city looks at them as a collective issue. And again, as I mentioned right at the beginning, the city believes that the zoning amendment would provide for additional sites. So while there is a mistake that the city is trying to remedy, that's not the sole motive, or really the primary motive on the zoning amendment. I would suggest you focus at, on the results of the zoning amendment, what would happen with that. And while there is this mistake, I think that's kind of been blown out of proportion. Remember, there's another site as well that is subject, that cannot be allowed unless we get this zoning amendment.
So are you saying basically we, we have to allow them because of free speech?
We have to allow them. I'm not sure that we actually, and Barbara can correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not sure that we actually have to allow them with this. We have four of them in the city. We believe that adding two more is appropriate. There's a lot of talk in the city staff and downtown when we talked about the downtown zoning amendments that Stephanie referenced earlier, that tattoo establishments don't have the stigma that they once had. I don't know, if you go into restaurants and the younger kids, it's hard to see a restaurant worker without a tattoo. It's not the same as the original concern was at the beginning when Oceanside crafted a very prescriptive zoning regulation scheme, particularly in our downtown area.
Commissioner Ball, do you have a question?
Yeah, I just was wondering how this all came about besides Mr. Gonzalez's letter. Was there complaints from neighbors that brought this issue to attention?
Commissioners, so it was actually Mr. Gonzalez who notified code enforcement of Freddie Freddie's operation.
And then from your presentation, we have four existing tattoo establishments currently, and this would make it the fifth, possibly the sixth with the other location at 1413, and you had a couple other areas that possibly could be establishments, and that was the drive-in movie theater and some other, there was, I think there was another one. So, not that many actually in the future could actually populate, and like Jeff Hunt brought to our attention, which I've seen myself, it's, tattoos are totally different than it was back in the day, and now everybody, a lot of young kids, it's very popular. And, you know, I don't have one myself, but I think if I was in this day and age, who knows? I probably might have a tattoo. So, I don't think we should be as strict as we were back in the day. I don't think there's anything wrong with what the staff crafted with this zoning change, and I understand what Mr. Gonzalez came here with. It is kind of a bummer that we had this hiccup and mistake, but I'd hate to see a business such as theirs be penalized any further than what they've already gone through. So, I'm supportive of continuing with the staff's recommendation.
Thank you. Any other thoughts? Anybody?
Yes. Oh, I can't, I can't see who is getting ready to speak, but.
Go ahead, Commissioner Goodkind, then we'll go to Commissioner Hayes after.
I agree with Commissioner Ballma. You know, regardless of whether part of the reason is that there is a mistake and we need to, you know, fix the mistake, I don't think there is any harm in this zoning change. And I think it's, it's long past time to stop stigmatizing tattoos. I also don't have any, but everybody else I know does, and I just don't think that it's such a big deal anymore, and I certainly don't think we should cause any more stress to this, to these business owners for no reason. So, I'm with Commissioner Ballma on this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hayes?
I was just going to ask Jeff for one more clarification, and it's, so it sounds like this idea for the zoning amendment originated from the other establishment. Is that correct?
That's correct. The, we actually were holding staff discussions and crafting a zoning amendment in order to address 1413 Coast Highway.
So, just to clarify, so that was actually conceived prior to the city understanding that it had made a mistake with the other establishment, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, that makes me feel a lot better, but as far as the tattoos, I totally agree with Louise and with Commissioner Goodkind that it's a different day and age, and I do have a tattoo.
I'm going to ask you to show it to us, but Stephanie may be correcting me, so.
No, I just wanted to say that the zoning amendment was initiated by the applicant of 1413 North Coast Highway. Staff was working with the applicant to kind of iron out the language of that zoning amendment when we were made aware of our mistake. So, that's why we moved forward with the zoning amendment. We finalized it to be able to bring it forward, but we were already working with the applicant of 1413 North Coast Highway to come to a zoning amendment language that would benefit that applicant to open their business, but also be something that the city could actually support. Just from the original ARC letters that were sent out to the, to that applicant of 1413 North Coast, their initial proposal was of some concern to city staff, so that we were working on that exact language that we were going to bring forward.
Thank you.
Thank you for that additional information.
So, does this limit the number of tattoo salons that can be put in the city altogether? Only these additional five more, three of which sites won't be used most likely?
Chairman and Commissioners, there's two amendments that staff is proposing, and one is to do away completely with the municipal code provisions, and that municipal code provision provides for a permit issued by the chief of police after analysis. There's also requirements in the municipal code that there are a limit of one per 50,000 population, which we interpret as three. Some people would say four. And I believe that there's also, correct me if I'm wrong, Stephanie, provisions that the, have to be 21 years or older?
That is correct. There are some provisions in Chapter 33 that do not comply with state or federal code anymore.
So, we are proposing to do, we haven't used that process in years, and the police is fine with doing away with that police permit. So, that would remove the technical cap. The rest results just from locational analysis based on a map, but it's not a firm number. It's just a result of that analysis.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Morsey.
So, so what I'm hearing is that, that there is going to be no cap if we vote this in, so anybody could, wherever it's legal, they could, they could put a tattoo. Any person can put a tattoo at the correct zoning, is that correct? At tattoo establishment?
Chairman and Commissioners, if they meet the criteria that is spelled out in the zoning ordinance, then there's a very good chance they would be allowed.
See, I don't, personally, I don't like the idea that we can't look at something like that, so for that reason, I would be against this.
But those criteria, just to counter the comment, the criteria are still reviewed. It's an administrative process reviewed by staff to make sure that they meet those criteria.
So, that's correct, and again, because it's a First Amendment issue, that criteria needs to be ministerial and not subjective.
Okay, thank you. All right. Good discussion. Anybody wanting to make a motion?
I just want to say one more thing. I, well, I mean, I hate to vote against this and destroy someone's business. At the same time, I have a hard time supporting this, that it has to be such an overall blanket type of change for one business, you know, because of a mistake that was made. So, I'm unsure.
Okay, thank you. Motion, anybody?
I would like to make a motion to adopt Planning Commission Resolution Number 2021P28, recommending city council approval of the city code and zoning amendment and local coastal program amendment with the findings of approval attached herein and confirmed issuance of a California SEQA guideline section under the common sense exemption. I like that, common sense.
I'll second.
So, we have a motion by Commissioner Ballma and a second by Commissioner Hayes to approve the item as proposed by staff. Any further discussion? Don't see any, so we'll go around and ask for a yea or nay. Commissioner Custer?
Can I abstain?
You can abstain.
I'll abstain.
Commissioner Hayes?
Yes.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Morsey?
No.
Commissioner Ballma?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodkind?
Yes.
Commissioner Rains?
Yes, I vote to approve.
And I approve as well. City Planner?
We'll record that as five in favor, one against, Commissioner Morsey, and one abstention, Commissioner Custer.
Great, thank you. Okay, that concludes our public hearings for tonight, so we will go, next item on the agenda, appeal of city planners' determination. We don't have anything listed on the agenda for that, nor anything under discussion items. So, we'll go to Commissioner Reports. I don't have anything really to report. I think our next meeting is, if you could exit quietly, we still have a meeting going on. Thank you. Our next meeting, I think, is August 9th, correct? And we're going to have a few Commissioners absent, so.
That is correct. August 9th is your next meeting.
I think I, I know of three that are absent, so the rest of you were.
That'll be here.
We're hoping that you'll be here on the 9th. Vice Chair Morsey, any report for tonight?
No report, but that I won't be here on August 9th.
Commissioner Goodkind?
No report, but I do have a question. When that St. Malo project was rescheduled, there was some discussion about setting up site visits. Is there any more information on that?
Yeah, good, good question. I have not been contacted. I think the applicant's rep was going to arrange that, and I think she had all our contact information. Maybe City Planner, I don't know if I want to burden you with this, but if you could reach out to that applicant's representative and, because I would like to see this site, it would be helpful. Of course, now I'm going on vacation. I'm coming back that same day, so I'm wondering when I'm going to squeeze this in, but let's not worry about that.
I will reach out to the applicant's representative and offer to give contact information.
Okay, great, thank you. Anything else? Commissioner Goodkind?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Ballma?
Nothing to report.
Commissioner Custer?
That I'll be out of town on August 9th.
Okay. Commissioner Hayes?
Nothing to report.
And Commissioner Rains?
Nothing to report tonight, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. City Planner, let you give us some updates.
Before I get into your agenda, could I get the three Commissioners? Well, Commissioner Custer said she's out on the 9th, and who are the other two? Louise? And the third one?
Vice Chair.
Vice Chair, thank you. So, for your next items, August 9th is the St. Malo variance. That's the only item on that agenda. Sergio Madera, who took it over from Veronica, he has had a long scheduled vacation, so I will be pinch hitting for Sergio. August 23, which is your next meeting, we will bring forward what's called a community vision document, and this is similar to the framework that you reviewed for South Moreau Hills. It will give information and direction, general direction, on drafting the rest of the general plan, the general plan elements, as part of our general plan update. So, we'll be asking for comments on that. It's a review and comment. It's not an adoption. It's not an official document. It's not a regulatory document. On September 13th, you have a mixed-use project at El Corazon, on El Camino Real, pardon me, just south of Fire Mountain Drive. That's 10 units, a mixed-use project. And then on September 27th, you have the 1602 South Coast Highway. That's at Moore Street. That's a 54 units, a mixed-use project as well. Council, there's some of their next meetings. The Amazon appeals are scheduled for August 4th. There's a workshop on August 11th, so workshops start at 2:00 in the afternoon on sand retention and replenishment for our beaches. The tattoo zoning amendment is scheduled for their review on August 18th. The cannabis CUP that you just reviewed is scheduled on September 1, and then the circulation element that you reviewed regarding the Melrose Extension is scheduled for their review on September 1. So, that's the near future for both Planning Commission and the council. That's all I had.
Very good, thank you. We have a question over here?
Jeff, on the August 23rd community vision document, you said that was, it was similar to the South Moreau Hills community plan, but it's basically everything but that part, right? It's the rest of the document, not so much the South Moreau Hills community plan, correct?
Correct, and it, it's more organized around the general plan elements, so there'll be, though to give you a little bit of lead time, the staff is not going to organize the general plan in a traditional manner where you have a land use element and a circulation element. They're going to blend those together under what's called common themes, and so one theme could be resilient communities, and there may be land use policies under that, there may be circulation policies under that. So, all those traditional general plan elements is what the vision document, the community vision document will address.
And this is in the onward Oceanside site, as far as if to review?
It will be, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, no other items on the agenda, so we're adjourned to August 9th.